Whenever you're ready, you can go ahead and start.
Okay. So, good evening and welcome to our April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one Vista Consolidated Meeting. The meeting is now called back to order. The meeting is being conducted using teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with the State of California Executive Order N dash twenty-nine dash twenty. In the event a quorum of the City Council loses electrical power or suffers an internet connection outage that is not corrected within ten minutes, the meeting will automatically be adjourned. Any items noticed as public hearing will be continued to the next regularly scheduled evening meeting of the City Council. Any other items on the agenda that the council has not taken action on will be placed on a future agenda. So with that, we will have our roll call by our City Clerk Kathy Valdez.
Thank you, Mayor. Please state your hair when I call your name. Mayor Ritter?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Green?
Here.
Councilmember Franklin?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras?
Present.
Councilmember Melendez?
Here.
All members are present. Also joining us are City Manager Patrick Johnson and City Attorney Daryl Piper.
Okay, in accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of one hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents for the district meeting pursuant to Buena Sanitation District Ordinance two thousand and six dash one. For members of the public that are participating through Zoom, you may raise your hand to indicate you would like to speak by clicking the raise hand feature on your screen or by pressing star nine on your phone. Instructions on how to join the meeting through Zoom are provided on the agenda cover sheet. You may speak on an item once, and public comment is limited to... Right now, it's... And we have three minutes, but depending on the number of speakers, if we get an overwhelming number of speakers, we'll change that to two minutes. So with that, I'll have the approval of the agenda by our City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes to the agenda this evening.
Okay, with that, we go to our City Attorney Daryl Piper to bring us out of our closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council did meet in closed session to discuss labor negotiations as item CS one on this evening's closed session agenda for the three employee organizations that are listed on the agenda. No action was taken. There is nothing to be reported.
Okay, and we have one presentation this evening. Lieutenant Colonel Gregory J. Youngberg, commanding officer of HMLA three-six-nine, is here to introduce himself and to discuss the Marine Light Attack Helicopter Squadron three-six-nine, of whom we are very proud. So, welcome. Welcome to Lieutenant Colonel Gregory.
Good evening, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Lieutenant Colonel Gregory John Youngberg, call sign Smash. I'm an AH one Z pilot by trade and the commanding officer of the HMLA three-six-nine gunfighters, who you have so graciously adopted as of about two thousand and eight. Really is an honor to speak with you tonight and really appreciate the time and your precious time to address you. First, I'd just like to start off by saying thank you. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. Truly is an honor. Thank you to Mayor Ritter, as well as Deputy Mayor Green. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight, as well as all the City Council members, and last but certainly not least, City Manager, Mr. Patrick Johnson, and the entire city staff. It's not lost on me, the level of support you've provided to the squadron in the past that you may continue to provide for us, and I really, it is humbling to get to speak with you tonight. I really appreciate everything you've done for us. You know, I talk about everything you've done for us in the past, particularly around the holiday times. Just want to highlight one example of your generosity and really your altruism. And specifically, that was just this past year over Christmas. I believe you conducted a toy drive for us, and one of our alter... One of our ready rooms, it's just a big space, open space where we conduct meetings with all the pilots and aircrew, was just absolutely filled to the brim with toys. And I've never seen anything like it in my life, and I just wanted to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for that. That was only a couple of months, right after I took command. And to see just the overwhelming level of support from our community was fantastic. So, thank you, both for me and from the entire gunfighter family. Okay, next slide, please. All right, so I'm not sure how many... How long each of you have been on the City Council or in the mayor, deputy mayor position, so I was going to give you a brief overview of who we are, where we're located, and ultimately what it is we do here in the Marine Corps and for the US military. So, in the Marine Corps and in the military, we love our acronyms, right? So you might be looking at HMLA, like, what in the world does that mean? Well, it means it is short, and this doesn't make any sense, but I'll just give it to you. Marine Light Attack Helicopter Squadron is what HMLA stands for. That's how we denominate our units, and we are three-six-nine is our specific denominator there. We consist of over three hundred and fifty Marines and sailors. Our higher headquarters, we are part of a bigger unit, specifically Marine Aircraft Group thirty-nine is our immediate higher headquarters. That is led by a full bird colonel. And then we belong to Third Marine Aircraft Wing, which is located out of Miramar, just a little bit south there, and further south in San Diego County. It consists of essentially any Marine aircraft within the southwest United States belongs to Third Marine Aircraft Wing, and that is commanded by a two-star general. We have twenty-seven H one helicopters. And you might be thinking to yourself, there's a couple of pictures of them below. On the left, you've got the AH one Z, now known as the Viper, previously known as the Cobra, and twelve UH one Y or Yankee Venom helicopters, previously known as the Huey. You might be looking at those and thinking to yourself, I've seen these in the past. And you have, because of one form or another, they've been around for about fifty years or so. In the United States military, primarily in the Marine Corps, but you've seen a version of those in the Army back in the Vietnam era as well. So I refer to ourselves as the gunfighter family a lot, because really, as we continue to work together and you get to know more of our Marines, our atmosphere, and the culture of our unit, it is really truly one big family. And that includes extended families to those individual Marines within the unit. Next slide, please. All right, we are located, as a crow flies, exactly ten miles to the northwest of you. There, from the center of the city of Vista, northwest Marine Corps Air Station Camp Pendleton. Next slide, please. So if you're not familiar with Camp Pendleton, that's a picture of our flight line and specifically where we're located on the flight line, just on the north end there. And all of our aircraft are parked there, and then we work in a hangar immediately adjacent to the actual runway and hangar parking, or correction, parking apron. And it really is, in my opinion, kind of the dirty secret in the US military. I think it's one of the best duty stations in the world. And one of the reasons it's the best duty stations in the world is not just the fantastic weather that we have in San Diego, but also the amazing community around us that is incredibly supportive of the Marine Corps and specifically your all support to us as the gunfighters. Next slide, please. Here's just another picture of our Marines working hard to get our birds in the air. This specific photo was one from about a little over a year ago where we flew, quote unquote, flew the barn, where we flew every helicopter that we had available that day, and it was on the order of almost twenty helicopters put in there in one day. So that's it. That's Camp Pendleton. We're located basically smack dab in the middle of the military reservation there. Next slide, please. All right, our mission. This slide is blank because really it comes down to one fact and one fact alone. Next slide, please. We are here to support the Marines who are fighting on the ground. That's why we exist. That is our number one mission and our number one priority. And everything we do, both in training and in combat, is towards that immediate end. Next slide. You'll hear some terms thrown around as you continue, as we continue to work together. Close air support, assault support, combat assault transport. And real all that's identifying is those Marines you see there on the ground. Sometimes it requires aviation-delivered fire support to help them accomplish their mission and get home alive, or to help them move around the battle space. And really, when I think about what kind of drives me, and it's driven me in my entire career, and I believe this to be the same for the rest of the pilots and Marines in our squadron, is we're helping eighteen, nineteen-year-old Marines with a rifle, first time in combat, get home alive and get to see their family again, as well as accomplish their mission, return home with honor. And to me, I think there's no greater privilege in the world than to get to do that. Next slide, please. That's another example of it. It's a little more high-speed, of some Marines fast roping, what we call fast roping out of the helicopter. But just another example of how we support those warfighters on the ground, many of which, outside of our squadron, are... Live inside the city Vista... Correction, the Vista City Limits, as well as, you know, thousands of them within San Diego County. Next slide. All right, a little about our history. We just recently celebrated our forty-ninth birthday on April first. And next year, I'm pleased to announce that we will be deployed in Marine Corps Air Station Futama in Okinawa, Japan. And we're going to get to celebrate our fiftieth birthday at the same place where we were born, you know, fifty years prior. Picture on the top right there is a photo of just how far our Cobra attack helicopters have come. That's a picture from nineteen seventy-two in Vietnam specifically, in our support there. And on the bottom is a more recent photo of our training out on a ship just off the coast of Camp Pendleton. We have a long operational history. You've heard me mention Vietnam, but we've been involved in Cambodia as far back as nineteen seventy-five, Kuwait, Somalia, Iraq. More recently, in Afghanistan was our most recent combat operation. Then continuously, we... Or routinely, we support continuous deployments, what we call rotational deployments to Okinawa. That's called the Unit Deployment Program, as well as expeditionary deployments on ship in the form of Marine Expeditionary Units. Locally, and you may or may not be familiar with this, but CAL FIRE is the State Firefighting Service. We also support them around fire season, which begins here in June and extends all the way until December. For those of you who remember the Lilac Fire back in two thousand and seventeen, my wife and I lived just off of Gofer Canyon in Vista around that time, and the entire flight line, all of our Huey helicopters were mobilized to support them. What's unique about that is CAL FIRE, that's a military support to civil agencies. CAL FIRE leads those operations, and I can tell you with great certainty that they're utmost professionals who are incredibly proficient and outstanding at fighting fighters, and it is an honor to get to support them in that effort and understanding and having experienced the benefit of that support. That's just one of the myriad things we do to kind of get back to the community, both here locally in San Diego and outside our county as well. Next slide, please. So, really, the nuts and bolts of this, of my presentation today is just to kind of really communicate to you how important it is to have your support, to continue having your support, and truly how much it makes the difference. What you see up here on the slide is a photo just from this past November of Thanksgiving Day. So what we arranged was for the Marines, particularly the ones who live in the barracks, who don't get to see their families often over the holidays, because their families could live in New York, East Coast, in some cases, in different countries. We arranged here in the barracks to have Thanksgiving Day dinner the day prior to Thanksgiving. And it was because of your support, as well as a few other smaller organizations, that we were able to put on a full-spread Thanksgiving Day dinner for Marines that otherwise wouldn't have had that opportunity. And it's not just our Marines who live in the community. It's the Marines, like I said, who are largely isolated on these holiday periods. And I can tell you just seeing it in their faces and the difference it makes in their lives from a morale standpoint, and then just from a, you know, just from a human standpoint, I think it really is a large impact on them. Next slide. For those of you who know Amanda Rigby, I know she's not on the City Council anymore, but still very much a part of the gunfighter family, has been for a long time, and her efforts along with yours really made Thanksgiving Day as well as Christmas special. Next slide, please. This is Christmas Day. So actually, on Christmas Day, at our Single Marine Program building, we were able to put on just the biggest spread I've ever seen for the group of Marines that stayed back and made Christmas Day special for them, and thanks to all of you for making that happen. Next slide. You know, I mentioned before, so there's a picture of... That was the aftermath, I would say, of the generous support and donations we got in the form of toys. That's what was left over. You know, what was filled to the brim was a sea of toys, and really made it, you know, Marines and their families, it changed their lives, frankly. But I want to, you know, on the left there, you see some demographics. I'm not going to go through every one of them. Talked about some of these, but at the end of the day, over half of our unit are between the ages of nineteen and twenty-five. And when you think about that, I can't tell you offhand how many of them are married, but I'd say close to half of them have families and are married. And for young families like that, who, you know, shockingly, the military does not pay them a large sum of money, things like this, donations like that, when I say it changes their lives and it changes the lives of their children, it absolutely does. You know, I just want to kind of connect the dots on why it is so important. Next slide, please. So really, bottom line is, we are your local Marine Corps unit. Your support, you know, to say it's a difference maker, I think is an understatement. And really, just an opportunity, one last opportunity here is to offer mine in the squadron's sincerest gratitude for your continued adoption of your gunfighters, because at the end of the day, they are your gunfighters, and we're happy to represent the city of Vista. Thank you again for your time tonight, and really appreciate the opportunity to get to address all of you. At this point, I'll take any questions you may have.
Okay, and thank you. Thank you for your service. We appreciate you and all of you and all that you do for all of us to make us be safe and free, and we appreciate all that you do, that your gunfighters do. But, and they have a dangerous job. I look at the helicopters and think about all that they're doing, and you guys are amazing. So... Was it... Councilmember Green?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you so much. And thank you so much, Lieutenant Colonel Youngberg. I just wanted to take the opportunity to personally say thank you so much for all you guys do. Without you guys out there serving and protecting our country, people like us can't be serving on governing boards like this. Your service is instrumental to the success of America and the success of our city for that matter. So I support you one hundred percent, and I look forward to us kind of getting out there and being some boots on the ground with the absence of Amanda Rigby. You're going to get to know some more of us during the holiday season. So we'll come out and see you. We'll support you, and we appreciate you so much. And early happy fiftieth anniversary, because I don't think any of us are going to make it to Okinawa. But, you know, April first, two thousand and twenty-two, that is huge, sir. So, thank you so much for your service. I appreciate you so much, and I sincerely thank you.
Deputy Mayor Green, thank you so much. I appreciate all the kind words there. I apologize, my volume, or I'm no longer able to hear any of you. I'm not sure if I got muted or what happened there.
Oh, we're so sorry. So, thank you.
That's okay. It's fixed. We're good. It's probably something I'm doing wrong on my end. I'm not great with technology, believe it or not. As evidenced by my background, which is nowhere near as snazzy as yours.
Okay, well, with that, we thank you, and I guess then we'll move on. Unless he can't hear us, we're going to move on to our next thing here on our agenda. So...
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you. Let's see, so we have to do, let's see. Did I do this? Okay, I think I'm at the approval of the agenda, but our City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Mayor, we're at the consent calendar right now.
Bye there. Okay, I went backwards. Okay, so now we're at the consent calendar. Recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion. Unless some item is removed from the calendar, any member of the public may remove an item by using the raise hand feature or pressing star nine now. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. And we have two consent items this evening, but if any City Council members want to remove an item, if not, I would consider a motion.
Mayor, I just want to say that there's no public that would like to remove an item either, so...
That was my next question, so that's good. So then I go back to the City Council members, and I would need a motion if nobody has anything to...
I'll make the motion.
Councilmember Franklin made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second. Okay, then, oh, please, City Clerk, test our votes.
All right, please state your vote when I call your name. Councilmember Melendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Green? Mayor Ritter?
Yes.
The consent calendar passes unanimously.
Okay, so then with that, that was... And we have two discussion items this evening. The first one is a preliminary review of a proposed general plan amendment and zone change at six fifty Sycamore Avenue. Community Development and Engineering Director John Conley will provide the staff report, followed by a presentation by the applicant. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so using the raise hand feature or pressing star nine now. And then speakers will be called upon after the presentations, and we have... Looks like we have close to twenty-eight... We have quite a few speakers or, you know, people looks like wanting to speak, and so I think we're going to do two minutes tonight, if that's okay with the presentation. So with that, would you like to hear... So, I guess we have... I'll turn it over to John Conley. I haven't done this in a while. I had to get rusty.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers. John Conley, Community Development Director, we're going to review a preliminary proposal for a general plan amendment and zone change at six fifty Sycamore Avenue. Next slide, please. So the property owner, which is the applicant in this case, is requesting to amend the general plan and change its zoning designation on their property, which is about eight-point-three acres. It's located at six fifty Sycamore Avenue. The proposed general plan amendment would modify the general plan land use designation from general commercial to mixed use, which would allow a maximum residential density of forty units to the acre. And the proposed zone change would correspondingly modify the zoning designation from commercial, the C two, which is our medium zoning, commercial designation, to mixed use, which is the corresponding zoning for the mixed-use general plan designation. The proposal further includes a conceptual plan by the applicant to develop the site, which is provided to you tonight for informational purposes, but has not been reviewed by staff for conformity with our code and development standards. And so we're providing it to you for informational purposes, as I mentioned. Next slide. This is an aerial view of the project site. It's the former location of the Burlington Coat Factory retail, as well as a veterinarian business that's still on the site. It's one legal lot, eight-point-three acres is the net lot size. The current commercial building on the site is about ninety-five thousand square feet and includes associated parking surrounding the site, as you can see in the aerial. And Buena Creek, which is partially channelized, runs along the eastern limits of the project site. Across the street is Palm Park. To the north is a range of commercial uses, including gas stations, hotel, and to the south is... Next slide, please. These are visual depictions of the general plan and zoning requests that have been submitted. On the left is the general plan, the current general commercial, which matches most of the surrounding designations. And on the lower left is the mixed-use proposed designation. On the right is the zoning, which would change from commercial C two to mixed use. These are also included in your agenda report. Next slide, please. So the current general plan, the general commercial designation and the zoning, C two, would allow a range of commercial uses, including retail, office, and service uses. The proposed GPA and zone change would allow a residential development of up to four stories or sixty feet in height with a maximum density of forty units per acre. That's the max development envelope allowed under the mixed-use zone. It should be noted that the City Council could establish lower height limits or density requirements for the mixed-use zone upon approval of a specific land use change, and so that could be considered if this comes before you for a formal decision. As I mentioned, the applicant submitted a preliminary design proposal, and so I'm just going to walk through that real briefly. Next slide. This is a site plan that was submitted that shows a development concept that would be developed under a mixed-use designation. It includes nine separate buildings. It would all be three-story buildings with an amenity, a smaller one-story amenity structure, which would be located in the north end, as well as a separate three thousand square foot retail space that would be located along Shadow Ridge Drive. Next slide, please. So the applicant's proposal that was shown in the prior site plan would include up to two hundred and fifty-six apartment units and nine three-story buildings and a separate three thousand square foot commercial building. The proposed mix of units would be townhomes, studios, and one- and two-bedroom units, and the numbers of each under the proposal that was submitted are provided on the slide there. It includes a total of six hundred and twenty-eight parking spaces, which would meet our code. It also relies on a higher multifamily parking ratio than what's provided in the current mixed-use zone. If the council remembers, the mixed-use zone has slightly lower parking limits than our regular multifamily standards, which are higher. They're about two-point-three to two-point-five spaces per unit. And the proposal that was submitted by the owner does rely on those higher standards, so, for your information. There are also new driveway entrances that are proposed off Thibodeau and Shadow Ridge Drive, as well as closure of the driveway that currently exists on the north side on Thibodeau Road and reliance on the existing driveway that is located on Sycamore Avenue. As I mentioned before, the application has not undergone a thorough staff review, and that would happen if a formal application is submitted. The purpose of tonight's discussion is just to provide some preliminary information to the council so that they can provide some feedback to the applicant on their proposal to change the general plan. Next slide. This is architectural rendering to give you an idea of the proposed architecture that was submitted with the applicant's concept. It's a contemporary design similar to the project that's under construction on North Santa Fe near the State of Brothers Center. Next slide, please. Another perspective drawn by the architect. You can see the tuck under parking that's proposed under the units, which all of the buildings would include. Next slide. This is a parking arrangement to show it's located, dispersed throughout the site. The color coding determines whether it would be open residential, garage space, guest space, or retail space. This is also provided in the packet that's in your agenda report. Next slide. So general plan and zone change requests are at the discretion of the City Council with a formal recommendation required by the Planning Commission. So if this were to move forward, it would go through the Planning Commission before coming back to the council for a formal decision. As I mentioned before, staff brings all of these preliminary requests before the council to provide an opportunity to inform the applicant of any comments that the council has, as well as to inform the public of the proposal at the onset of the application. With that, staff's requesting that the City Council provide input to the applicant on the proposal that's been submitted. The applicant's representative, Sarah Withers, is with us this evening, and I believe she has a separate presentation that she'd like to provide to the council. So unless there are any questions, I will hand it back to the mayor, who can give it to Sarah Withers for her presentation. Thank you.
There are no questions right now. Want to hear from Sarah Withers? Is that okay? Is everybody? Okay, so I'll turn it over to Sarah. I don't see her.
I was hoping that she was going to be one of our attendees.
She's there.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much, and thank you, John. I think you really gave a good overview of our presentation. I do want to thank everyone for allowing us the opportunity to speak this evening and share our thoughts. My name is Sarah Magana Withers. I'm Development Manager for Excel Property Management. We own the property located at six fifty Sycamore Avenue on the city of Vista. As many of you may recall, this is the site of the former Burlington Coat Factory and the current location of Shadow Ridge Veterinary Hospital. We are here tonight to open the dialogue and work with the city and the community to develop the vision for the future of our property. We have worked diligently to find other tenants to occupy the existing space, and unfortunately, due to COVID and the current economic conditions of our country, it has been very difficult. We believe that a mixed-use residential-commercial development would be the best use for the site. Now that the site is vacant, it has been targeted by vandals conducting illegal activities. We do not want to leave the site vacant for too long. I would like to share a brief summary of who we are. Our company has been in business for over thirty years. We own and operate over ten million square feet throughout the state of California. The development of challenging properties with unusual physical layouts or negative environmental issues has been one of the company's strong points. With these issues, the company has consistently demonstrated its ability to be creative with both the design and appropriate tenant mix to obtain maximum results. I would like to share with you a few of our most challenging completed projects and a few in the pipeline. Am I going to be able to go to the next slide, or should I just... As you can see here, this is the Springs. This is a former municipal landfill. It's a brown field in the city of Palm Springs, as I mentioned, on the corner of Genautri and Ramon. The project included the purchase remediation, the strategy for construction, and the closure approval of the former uncontrolled municipal landfill. The project included the excavation and compaction of over one million cubic yards of landfill material on a thirty-seven-acre site. The entire cleanup was performed with private financial resources. The entire cleanup was performed with private financial resources. The site has comprised of 412,000 square feet of retail-commercial uses. The center is anchored by The Home Depot and a variety of ancillary retail stores. The project received a prestigious state award and is a testament to successful redevelopment. Please go to the next slide. The next project that we have is the Grand Plaza Outlet Mall in the city of Callexico. This project is approximately 200 acres. It sits directly on the border of Mexicali and California and adjacent to the most contaminated river in North America. There were significant bi-national and environmental issues on this site, but we successfully were able to redevelop the site into an outlet mall and bring thousands of new jobs to a city that, in the past, has experienced up to 60% unemployment. Please go to the next slide. The next project that we have is in the city of Whittier. This is a residential development that we recently finished. It's approximately 100 units. As you could see, this is a sample of some of the interior of this project. And also, it was a very challenging site, very small corner location in a very dense area. Please go to the next slide. This is another project that we have in the city of Santa Monica, West Hollywood, excuse me, 960 Santa Monica Boulevard on the corner of Doherty and Santa Monica. As you could see, we have already started. We demolished the buildings that were there, and we are in the process of redeveloping the site. It's two and a half acres, very challenging. We plan to build a mixed-use residential retail component at this location. Please go to the next slide. This is another development that we have in Pacific Palisades on Sunset Boulevard. And it's another residential development that is actually adjacent to Sunset Boulevard overlooking the ocean. It is on a hillside, very challenging site. There's, we have to deal with Coastal Commission and many other regulatory agencies. And as you could see, this is the concept that we have for that project. Please go to the next slide. This is our current property that we have here. As you could see, it is bordered, and anybody that lives in Vista or works in Vista is probably very familiar with the location. The corner, we do have the drainage ditch that is fronting Sycamore. As you could see, it makes it very challenging to see any building or any signage that's behind the property. That was one of the biggest challenges that we had here with Burlington. And unfortunately, they wind up going on the other side of the freeway as most of the other retail and big-box users. Like I mentioned before, it is a huge challenge to be able to get any type of retail here. We have approached many retailers in the past. As we, you know, we're primarily retail developers, so we have relationships with all the nationals. And we have pitched it to many. We've done a variety of conceptual site plans to see how we can configure the land to be able to get new tenants here. And we have been unsuccessful. Please go to the next slide. Please go to the next slide. Thank you. John covered this. This is just a very preliminary draft so that you could see the massing, the scale of the development. Please go to the next slide. These are just some conceptual, this is a work in progress. We do believe that a mixed-use development would be very successful here. We would be able to utilize the topography of the land. As you could see in the back, where you see the long strip of green, that's approximately 25 feet high from where we're at. So we're basically in a bowl, which we can utilize to be able to make it at a more human scale. We've designed the project so that parking is extremely accessible. The massing is split up. You do have the amenities. There's a clubhouse in the center of the project. You have the pool. You also have a plaza area. You have walking paths throughout the entire property. We've also, because of the drainage ditch that we have there off of Sycamore, we plan to clean that up and make it as part of a feature. We also are, you know, we'd like to propose townhomes. We realize that townhomes are probably a little bit more expensive to build, but we want to make sure that there's quality of life here and also that when people drive by, that you see the townhomes. There're going to be a budding Sycamore and off of Shadow Ridge. This is a for-rent development. It's not for sale. This is something that we plan to own and operate within our company. You also have townhomes along Shadow Ridge and then also off of Theodore. You also have, in the center of the site, is where you have your apartments. And the breakdown that we have is approximately, let me go to that page, since my eyes are, there we go. We have approximately 38 townhomes, 18 studios, 148 one-bedrooms, and two bedrooms, we have approximately 61. This development is parked-to-code, so it would not require any type of parking variance or anything like that. Like I mentioned before, this is just a preliminary concept that we have. We would like to work with staff and the community to be able to come up with what is the proper scale and density for this site. Please go to the next slide. As you could see here, this is the parking that we have and what we provide. We have a parking tabulation. We did not want to submit some type of bubble drawing or just a concept. We wanted to make sure that it was something that we'd be able to have a productive dialogue. Please go to the next slide. Here is also another open space tabulation, as you could see. We want to make sure that people can get out of their homes. We've been in quarantine for a very long time. We want to make sure that neighbors can get to know each other and be able to walk throughout the development and get to know each other. Please go to the next slide. And as you could see here, we did go ahead and lay out some of the units. We wanted to make sure what type of layouts that we could provide. You see here the way that the access, we did something very important. We changed the access from the front, Theodore, to the back. And that way, you have access along the rear and so that we can consolidate the access points and basically not have traffic at the intersection. We do plan to do a complete traffic study and then also be able to study any other impacts that the project would be, that may occur. Please go to the next slide. As you could see, these are all conceptual views. We would like to work with staff, the planning commission, and the community to be able to tailor the site, to be able to make sure that the architecture is within line with what the community would like to see. Please go to the next slide. And I, once again, here we have parking. It's very accessible. This is very preliminary, so obviously, we will have a full landscape plan that goes along with this. We'll have an access, traffic study that will go along with this as well. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Okay, do you want to hear the speakers first, or do you want to ask questions? Speakers first?
Please, speakers.
Okay, then I'll turn it over to our city clerk for the speakers. And it looks like we can do three minutes. It looks like we don't have that many speakers.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. First speaker is Bill Martin. Go ahead, Bill.
Thank you, and good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Ritter, members of the city council. My name's Bill Martin. I live in District 3, and I'm also a member of the Board of Directors for South Vista Communities. South Vista Communities has, well, we met last week, the board did. We had a robust discussion about the proposal, and we prepared a letter that was sent on to the council. And I'd like to go ahead and read that letter into the record. "South Vista Communities appreciates the opportunity to comment on the proposed changes to the general plan and zoning on the 8.3-acre former Burlington retail site addressed to 650 Sycamore. This early opportunity to provide comments is vital to ensuring transparency and public participation in the planning process, and we are grateful the council engages the community in this practice. The proposal would change the city's plan designations on the site from commercial to mixed use for the purpose of redeveloping the site with a predominantly residential project. While our clear preference would be for the site to redevelop with other new commercial or office uses, we understand the current state of commercial real estate and development does not bode well for the abandoned building on the site. Our primary concern is to avoid seeing the existing condition of the property decay into blight. South Vista Communities supports allowing the property owner and applicant to move forward to the next step of submitting a mixed-use development project to staff provided a clear message is sent to the applicant. The city council should inform the applicant of the importance of providing a high-quality residential living experience with exemplary design and amenities befitting a site located at the gateway to Shadow Ridge, the largest master-planned community in Vista. This is important because the concept plan attached to the staff report fails to meet that standard. The proposed concept plan prioritizes parking, maximizing density, and value engineering over creating community and a livable environment for future residents. South Vista Communities suggests a lower density with more commercial square footage, additional usable open space, and the inclusion of for-sale residential product to help alleviate these concerns. Potential issues, including traffic impacts, can be fully vetted during the environmental review conducted for the project, and we look forward to participating in that process as well. South Vista Communities stands ready to work with the applicant and staff to ensure the development of a successful mixed-use project that enhances our vibrant community." Thank you.
Next speaker is Daniel O'Donnell. Go ahead, Daniel.
Madam Mayor and members of the city council, I just want to say thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. I've spoken with a lot of people, and like many others, in the current status that's being proposed, I oppose the rezoning and changing of the general plan located at 650 Sycamore Avenue. I just want to begin by saying I do understand this is all preliminary, and I do look forward to the changes that may come, but I just wanted to voice a few of my concerns. The things that we need to consider are first that a construction project of this size would have massive impacts on an area already burdened with heavy traffic during business hours. A residential project of this scope would create massive construction on a main artery of Shadow Ridge and Sycamore and create traffic spillover and congestion in the neighborhoods on both the east and west sides of Sycamore. There are many studies that have also shown that construction projects of this nature near waterways have negative impacts on the environment and the community due to waste, mud, dust, as well as the water contamination and damage to our public drainage systems. Further, the water consumption from a 256-unit development with roughly 32 units per acre would have a heavy burden on the already taxed and depleted water resources in our community. Also, while I have heard suggested, this will not solve, nor is it a solution, of housing insecurity issues taking place at this location. And finally, adjacent to this place, on Thibodeau Road sits Vista Firehouse 4. I'd like to see how an increase in traffic at a project of this size will affect their ability to give timely responses to emergency services. Four years ago, when I moved here with my fiance, we did so so that we could buy our first home. We want to start our family here. We want to, we want to live in a place that we are proud to call home. During the last few months, I have organized cleanups, and twice, we have ended up at 650 Sycamore. And I will tell you, it rips me to my core to see how dirty that lot has been, how dirty that creek has been. However, nothing would sadden me more than if we give up on this space and build a high-density housing market. We need to find and explore options that will include ideas that will beautify the creek, perhaps create a well-lit walkway for our residents to enjoy. We should explore bringing in a new grocery store. I can tell you, I've spoken with many members of this community that would love to see a Trader Joe's go in there. We could add family restaurants, perhaps a wine bar, brewery, independent coffee shops, or some type of friendly entertainment space. Just as it's given right now, I do not think that this is the correct space for this size of a housing development. And I do look forward to see the changes that come through. But just bear in mind that, once we give this space up, we do not get it back. And this is a valuable piece of retail here in our neighborhood. So, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I want to thank you very much for your time this evening and your consideration.
Thank you. Next is Jim Riegenbach. Go ahead, Jim.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I got to tell you, when I first saw that there was a request for a multi-use zoning change, I thought, ooh, that sounds fun. Shops down below, condos up above. It could be pretty cool. But then I saw the proposal, and there's just a sliver of commercial space proposed. So I wondered, why wouldn't they just request zoning for multifamily? Because that's what they're building. So that got me interested in what multi-use means. And first of all, I found out it does not, well, it does allow for multiuses. It does not require multi-use. So they can basically build whatever they want there, and it could all be commercial. It could be all residential. It could be all whatever they want. And more importantly, with multi-use, the standards for parking setbacks and space between buildings are more favorable. And that's more favorable to the developer, not to the neighborhood. So there's a problem with multi-use zoning. In fact, I was recently reading the minutes from a January 2016 planning commission meeting, and there was concern expressed by the commissioners that the multi-use zoning ordinance is basically a giant loophole for developers to pack in the units but scamp on the parking and the setbacks and the space between buildings. And just tonight, the applicant showed us examples of their work, but none of it showed a mix of uses. It was either all commercial or all residential. So that should tell you something. Plus, there's no affordable housing in this plan. I mean, it's really a travesty that we don't have an inclusionary housing policy in this city, but at least suggest or compel a developer to include affordable housing in whatever other ways you can. Redevelopment is definitely needed in this space, but this project is problematic. Thank you.
There are no other individuals requesting to speak. So go ahead, close opportunity to provide public comment at this time.
Okay, then I will put it out to my council members and see comments from the council. Councilmember Franklin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is definitely part of Vista that I consider to be my neighborhood. My home is in very close proximity, just down Shadow Ridge. My offices are on Thibodeau Road. And so I pass through this parking lot several times a day. I've made it to point to drive through the parking lot recently every time I'm coming and going home or to work because we have had so much negative activity since Burlington left, primarily with homeless encampments and vandalism. And I want to really commend- And I want to really commend not only our city staff, but also, I really do want to commend the property owner because the property owner has had crews, paid crews on-site to remediate waste, trash, pollution, and to address health and safety issues on a daily basis. And I do believe that that shows a real commitment to being a good corporate citizen in the city. We have other problem properties in the city where the owners aren't as diligent in working with us, but this owner has worked very closely with our code enforcement staff, and that does count for a lot. You know, as we look at the evolution of big-box retail, clearly, you know, for the last at least decade, Burlington didn't utilize any more than half of their store. For those of us who shop there, they had partitioned off the back half of the space and weren't utilizing it. We see a number of big-box retail installations in North County Square on the other side of the highway, but right here in our neighborhood that are struggling to find successful long-term tenants. We've had several things that have come and gone, and we really are struggling to utilize these large spaces. At the same time, right here in the Business Park, also right in our neighborhood, we have a massive new Amazon facility. No doubt, the internet has changed the way that we buy many of the goods that we furnish our homes with, and this has had a major impact on the way we shop and the need for retail space. This is a reality that existed prior to COVID. It's not, you know, COVID was, many have said, was the sort of the, one of the last nails in the coffin of big-box retail. It really kept us all home, and those of us who weren't shopping online certainly were during the pandemic. And I agree with the comments from my neighbors who want to see small businesses, who want to see, you know, family-owned businesses and places for families to gather. That is certainly a priority of mine. Additional places where our families can gather to have a meal or to have a business lunch, that is a huge priority. I know that I have, Councilman Green has on several occasions. Kevin Hamm, our Economic Development Director, has reached out to Trader Joe's on numerous occasions. We would all very much like to have a Trader Joe's in Vista. They have let us know that, you know, from this particular location, it's three-point-seven miles and seven minutes' drive to the nearest Trader Joe's. And at this time, the Trader Joe's company has no plans to build a store that close to an existing Trader Joe's. So, you know, I don't want to say we've given up on Trader Joe's because we will never give up on bringing Trader Joe's, right, Councilman Green? However, it doesn't look like a grocery store installation or another large retail installation, you know, is a realistic possibility there. And, you know, we work with a lot of property owners on the council, and I know that this property owner has invested significant resources in keeping this property clean. And most people would say they have because they've seen so much trash and so many problems with this site. But the reality is, all that trash would have built up, it would have been a landfill by now in a few short months if it hadn't been for the commitment of the property owner. There are other properties that are literally within a stone's throw of this particular property where the owner, because they don't have an intended use, has put up a temporary chain-link fence. It would be absolutely devastating and unfortunate for our neighborhood if this property owner were forced to erect a chain-link fence around the property because the city did not want to yield to some successful use, and we want to force the property owner to leave the property vacant. It would, in my mind, there's no question, the fence would be breached, and it would become a permanent encampment, the kind that many neighbors would be very troubled by. Of course, this whole issue also brings up, you know, and it's, tonight's not the discussion, but we've had many meetings, and I want to remind the public, we're working very hard to implement our homelessness master plan. It's a major priority for all of us on the council and for all of our staff at the city. And we've recently spent three-and-a-half million dollars, and we'll be spending more to address homelessness with a large number of tactics. So I do want to insert that at this point in the conversation because it's relevant. I also have been contacted by a large number of residents who wanted to give their input on this project, and I have heard from neighbors that the density that is proposed here is higher than other projects in the area. And I do believe that that is something that the owner and developer is going to have to address as they move forward through the process. And for those who are watching this evening and aren't familiar with our design review process, which is what we're doing tonight, in years past, we used to have landowners who would spend a year or two years with architects, environmental consultants, traffic engineers, and they would spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on these reports only to get to a first opportunity to come before the council and to review their intended use for their property. We realized about four years ago, I think it was, that we had the process backwards. And so we did something innovative in Vista, and we've implemented these design reviews. This means that the community, all the citizens, the staff, and the council have a first opportunity to comment before the project even gets off the ground, and that's where we're at tonight. This project hasn't even gotten off the ground yet. I appreciate the property owner making a proposal for a productive use of their property. We want to see the property be a success, no matter what's built there. We want it to flourish. We want it to bring families and consumers into Vista. And we want it to bring a successful property where the landowner is absolutely committed to the maintenance and upkeep of their property. We want them to have a vested financial and personal interest to be on their property for years to come, keeping up the maintenance, keeping up the buildings, keeping up the landscaping. That's what we want in this neighborhood. We want attention to upkeep, and as was mentioned by one of my neighbors, we absolutely want high-end housing that's market rate, that reflects the character of the surrounding neighborhood. That is very important. So I do think there's room to improve the proposal that's been offered. I personally think there could be some rearrangement of the site design. I think, you know, a little bit more detail, and I'll follow up, you know, as we go through the process. But I do think we can do a little bit better on the design, maybe move the pool amenity away from Thibodeau Road and maybe somehow closer to the center. But, you know, as we go through the process, we're also going to see the elevation drawings. And I always really like to see the elevation drawings that show us what might this project look like from the roadway because, of course, we don't look at projects from an overhead view. When we drive by them on the street, we see them from a street-level view, and those elevation drawings are incredibly important to our understanding of what this project's going to look like. We'll also have to work very hard to understand the height impacts of this project, the traffic impacts. You know, one thing, I do want to say something that's very important about the traffic impact here. We're going to look at the traffic impact very carefully, and I know I'm not the only member of the council that believes that with every development project, that the development should leave the surrounding intersections and traffic system better than they were found. So we expect a better performance of traffic from every new development through the mitigation measures that are adopted than what was found. That's what we want to do, is leave everything better than we found it. We do want to keep in mind that Kmart was the original occupant of this site. And there are, I think, three-hundred-and-fifty-some parking spaces on the site currently. If you go back forty years ago and imagine a bustling Kmart with three-hundred-and-fifty cars potentially parked in the lot, we think in terms of ADT or average daily traffic trips, there would have been a very large volume of commercial traffic at this site at one time. And if a commercial use was adopted, then a very successful commercial use on Sycamore, which has forty-four thousand average daily trips, you're going to see a large quantity of commercial vehicle traffic to this site if a successful commercial development replaces the existing use. In the same way, you're going to see an increase in use from what's today, you know, a few trips a day because the property is not being utilized. But if this property were being utilized to its best and highest commercial purpose, it would support a very large number of daily trips as it is presently zoned. And so I do think when we talk about traffic, we do have to look at the fact that this parcel, when it's being utilized, has a major impact on the traffic of the surrounding area. That's a natural given for eight acres of property that is literally located right on top of one of our prime interchanges with the major arterial and the SR seventy-eight. So that's just something that we need to think logically about, is the fact that commercial uses also have traffic impacts as well as residential uses. So we want to, we want to be able to compare, not against a vacant use because frankly, the owner has a right for their property not to be vacant, and it's in the best interest of the surrounding neighborhood for the property not to be vacant. So we need to consider the traffic impacts of a commercial use and compare those with the intended impacts, which will be studied during this process. So, all of that said, I do believe there's room for improvement. I think we can work to reduce the density and to improve the quality of the housing product being offered. I want to thank Ms. Withers. I met with her several times virtually and once on the property, had a wonderful conversation with her. And Dr. Schyberg, the veterinarian who cares for our family's pets. And the property owners expressed a great willingness to try and work to retain Shadow Ridge Veterinary Clinic, which I know all of our families here in the neighborhood would really like because we'd like to see our, you know, our fur babies continue to be treated at that location. So that's important to a lot of us here in the neighborhood who own pets. And I really appreciate that commitment to try and work with the existing tenant. That really demonstrates a commitment to the community and what's important to the community. So this is a one-to-two-year process that you're embarking on at this point that's going to go through a full review of all the environmental impacts, all of the construction impacts, all of the traffic impacts. And we're going to have multiple opportunities as the written proposal develops and the architectural drawings develop for the community to continuously review this project as it evolves. And I know personally, I want to hear from every citizen that's following this process, and I want to hear all their comments, and I'm going to share all of those with our development staff. I'm going to share them in our public meetings, and I'm going to share them with the property owner so that we can make this proposal the best that it can be to serve the interests of the residents that live in our community today. So with that, those are my comments, and I look forward to hearing from all of you who are watching and following this product, this proposal. Thank you.
Nice comments, councilmember. Deputy Mayor Green.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, and thank you so much, Councilmember Franklin. I always look to the guy who lives right around the corner from the project for what the rumblings are of the community. So I definitely appreciate that, and I appreciate the research. Forty-four thousand trips a day heading down Sycamore. I think all of us on the council have been stuck coming from Business Park back over to North Vista on Sycamore at some point in time. I do remember that Kmart, actually, Kmart was there before North County Square, and they used to sell Little Caesar's pizza inside Kmart. So when I was in high school over in Shadow Ridge, I used to go there, and you're right, it was a very bustling center. It was packed parking lot, lots of trips. I want to thank the community called South Vista Communities. I loved your input there. I definitely think that this particular lot is a gateway to the community, and we're looking at very preliminary drawings right now. But Ms. Withers, I want to make sure that you understand, you know, when people turn right, they're going to shop those big-box stores. A lot of times when they turn left, they're going into the residential area of Shadow Ridge. There is a grocery store right there, but that does go right into the heart of Shadow Ridge. So something big there, there's a big marquee on the corner of Sycamore and Shadow Ridge Drive that says Shadow Ridge on both corners that's real nice, that we keep maintaining. And I think some type of big marquee when you come into that area is definitely something that the Shadow Ridge community deserves, just kind of highlighting this grand entrance. Cut back some of those plants, open it up, make it look, maybe we want to see that beautiful creek there. And maybe you put walking trails in your development around that creek as well so that the community can utilize it a little bit. So making that a gateway entrance is something that I think should be focused on. Somebody else mentioned that we can't build because of the nuisances of the construction and our water resources. That's something that I know that we'll definitely be doing all of the, you know, sequent studies and make sure we have the proper resources. So I look forward to all the money that potentially you'll be spending on that. Another caller, Mr. Regenbach, came in and said that we don't have an inclusionary housing policy here in the city of Vista. And I'm not a fan of actually an inclusionary housing policy over the whole entire city, like any type of blanket policy. But I think you can look at every unit and every project individually. This particular project has two-hundred-and-fifty-six units. And if you were to take five percent of those units, which would be thirteen units, or even seven percent of those units, which is eighteen units, and make those affordable, and when I say affordable, I mean, these are people who are still making sixty grand a year, but that's what affordable housing is these days. I mean, we should be making some homes that, you know, people can get into that have limited incomes in this development. You can rent out your two-bedroom lofts for four thousand bucks all day to people who can afford it, but young families that want to come in that can only afford eighteen hundred or twenty-one hundred dollars per month, I would like a percentage of these two-hundred-and-fifty-six units to be affordable for some type of communities. I do get the type of resident that you have in Shadow Ridge. I know they're more corporate, might have higher incomes than ones on the north side of the city, but I do think blending that is a fantastic dynamic for a community. And eighteen units out of two-hundred-and-fifty-six units leaves you a ton of units to rent out at market rate. With that said, though, two-hundred-and-fifty-six units is thirty-two units per acre. And if you want us to give you thirty-two units per acre when the customary developments in Shadow Ridge are at twenty units per acre, you got to do something awesome for us. So making it a gateway to the community, maybe adding a very small percentage of affordable units to the community, and then also if there's additional retail that can be added, although I know that might not be feasible. From a parking standpoint, I know that mixed use does give you a benefit for parking, but we are trying to shift away from cars. I mean, we want to get people on public transport and riding buses and pushing scooters around town and things like that. So I do feel like there's ample parking, two-point-four-five spots per unit, I do feel like is ample for this particular development, especially when you consider the amount of one-bedroom units in this development. So those are things that I wrote down here. The other thing is, is you're requesting a forty-units-per-acre zoning. And my stipulation, my guidance, would be if we do approve a zoning change on this, which a general plan amendment doesn't need to be done, you know, we've done a great job with our housing element, so it has to be something awesome. If we are going to change this, I wouldn't want to give the developer the ability to build forty units per acre, even though they say they're only building thirty-two units per acre or whatever. I would want to prove it at a cap, and I think that's what Councilmember Franklin was saying, is we don't want to have an overwhelming amount of density. So maybe we cut it down to twenty-five units per acre, thirty units per acre, and do like a spot zone approval based off of our mixed-use plan or something. John Conley and, you know, the smart engineers will be better at that than me, but I want some protection to be in place for the community, that what you say you're going to bring to the community is actually what we're going to get. And once we sign off on something, as one of the callers said, land is a commodity, all right? Our biggest responsibility as council members is land use. Once we change it, we can't change it back. So you're going to build something there that's going to be there for decades and years and years. This shopping center was there for over forty years. So we want to make sure what you build is a beacon of light and hope and joy for our community as a whole. So let me just write that down, eighteen percent, twenty, boom, boom, boom. I think that's it. I know this is a preliminary review and that you're going to come back and give us more information. I am favorable to the zone change as long as there's things that benefit the community because like Councilmember Franklin said, developers provide infrastructure improvements. And we've all been part of the bottleneck on Thibodeau, trying to get on Sycamore, and we'll be talking about that, and we've all been a part of the bottleneck on Sycamore. So I appreciate you coming here, I appreciate you building here, and I really look forward to you bringing something awesome to the community that we can approve on a five-o vote that we're going to be excited about building in the city of Vista. So those are my comments, Ms. Withers. Thank you so much for your time and all of your work.
Councilmember Contreras.
Wow, that was some really good commentary right there, Deputy Mayor. I pretty much just have to echo what's been said before. I am not opposed to changing the zoning here, but it has to- But it has to be a public benefit. And, you know, I had the, the opportunity to listen in on the North County Economic Summit today. And the, the issue is, you know what? A lot of our folks that are in the workforce can just, they just can't afford to live near their job. The fact that this is near the business park, I want to make sure that, you know, we're reducing greenhouse gas emissions by reducing the amount of travel it takes to get to your job and back home. So I am 100% in favor of moving forward if, and it's, it is going to, for me, it's going to hinge on if we have a certain percentage of these units deemed affordable. So that to me is huge. I do like what has been said about the frontage. Totally understand, right? It's been, right now, instead of it being a benefit to the public, it's a nuisance. But that frontage can really turn into something that is an amenity for the surrounding neighborhoods as you're taking a stroll, you know, from where you live to, you know, maybe go get something at Jack in the Box or go to Stater Brothers, right, with your family? Go get some Italian food, some Vietnamese food, right? You can go through the little, you know, little trail that really highlights the beautiful native plants that we have here in California. That to me, it really, from what the site is right now to this type of vision that, you know, we're creating collectively as a council and as a community, it really, really increases the prosperity and the well-being of our entire Vista community. So I don't want to, I don't have too much more to add because both Councilmember Franklin and Deputy Mayor Green have said a lot of good comments. But for me, moving forward does completely hinge on, you know, 6% to 10% affordable. Because we need our workforce to be able to live closer to where they work. And we also need to make sure that, you know, we, if we do move forward with changing something, that it needs to be a public benefit. But I thank you, and of course, my wonderful coworkers on staff for always, you know, looking out at, you know, what, what can be something better for the community. And I know that y'all are willing to work with us. So let's get a really good final design. But please, for me, once again, one more time, affordable housing. So thanks.
Actually, I'll go ahead. This location is close to the business park. So, you know, the close proximity is for, for jobs. You could, they could actually, I like the location for housing. You can walk to the grocery store, you know, it's a, you can walk to restaurants, like IHOP was right there. Walk across the street and go to a restaurant in the shopping center. I, I think it removes blight. So I mean, I like it. I like, I like the look of their Whittier project. It looked more like a Shadow Ridge. This is kind of a modern look, which Shadow Ridge is pretty, it's not, doesn't have that look to it. You know, if you look through all out throughout Shadow Ridge and so, but I like the look, the Whittier project. It would look more like that. I think it might be, maybe better on that corner. Maybe a better look. That's just my own opinion, and I would go with what everybody else does. But I, I would support that, and I think you all have good comments. I think Director Conley, do you have enough information from the city to go forward on this?
Mayor, I think Councilmember Melendez wants to speak too.
Oh yeah, I didn't see her. She didn't have her hand up, so I didn't see that. Okay, Councilmember Melendez.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to all my colleagues for a great discussion tonight. And thank you, Ms. Withers, for your great presentation and for your due diligence. And thank you to all the residents who called in, right? This is all a part of the discussion and helps us as a council, as a body, right? Moving together, form a vision that's going to be really good for the community. Some of the comments I've really appreciated so far is that, you know, this, this is not an option for this location to remain vacant. This is something that needs to become a flourishing spot for the community. And, you know, new neighbors and new housing can be an incredible benefit to the community if it's produced in a way that is going to, you know, not only meet the need of the community's need for housing, but also be designed in a way that is integrated. And I also appreciate, right, the concern about this commercial space. I appreciate your comments, Councilmember Franklin, about, you know, Amazon and about our change in our retail spaces, that this is, you know, we're moving in a different direction. And we're going to more and more see how different commercial spaces like this are reimagined, right? So this is a really cool opportunity for Vista to start to look at these kinds of spaces, right? And reimagine commercial spaces as, you know, residential spaces or as more community-oriented spaces. So this for me is a good opportunity, and I am definitely open to a zone change here. Echoing some of my other council members' concerns, I am a huge advocate of affordable housing. And, you know, and I do prefer inclusionary housing. I think that it's one of the best methods for curating affordable units in our, in our community in an integrated way, right? Not in a way that there's, you know, market rate luxury housing on this side and then affordable units on this side, instead of integrated community, right? Where we can kind of work and live together and, you know, an equitable community. And if the city of Vista still retained its inclusionary housing requirements from years past of 6 to 100 units, that would require 16 affordable units to be built or to be at least considered for this site. And for me, I would prefer more than that, right? So rather than 6%, I would probably prefer more to 10% of affordable units, especially with the, the density that it currently is at. So of course, right, as the plans change, if the density is reduced, that might affect, right, what the number of affordable units might look like. And that's definitely all things that we could consider as a council. But I definitely hear the community, you know, seeing housing development go up. You know, we know that building housing doesn't necessarily resolve the housing insecurity issues. It doesn't necessarily resolve the homelessness issues that we see in that area. But if we were to see, you know, 16-plus affordable housing units, it would be a small but meaningful contribution towards housing affordability in our area. And it would really go along with what redevelopment of these commercial spaces look like, right? Taking something that, right, is blight and taking something that is not providing a very, very rich necessary resource of housing in the community and turning it into that. So I'm definitely open to these kinds of changes. I know that there are a lot of concerns about traffic. That's something that Vista is continuing to struggle with. And that is something that, like some of our other council members have mentioned, development of this kind would allow for certain traffic improvements. And I'd like to see what those would look like as well. So right now, we're really just looking at this, this portion of the project at the just preliminary plans. But I am very curious about what the plans would look like in terms of how it would integrate into the rest of, right, this part of the community. I love Deputy Mayor Franklin or Green, what you were sharing about a gateway to Shadow Ridge. I think that that's an incredible way to look at this project. And Councilmember Contreras of, you know, seeing this is how is it going to provide public benefit? So for me as well, number one thing is going to be affordability. For something like this, we want to make sure we have integrated housing, especially if it is going to be a change, right, in, in this part of the community, if it's going to be higher density. We want to be able to grow, the community be able to grow together. And integrated housing is a really wonderful way to do that. Let's see if I had any other comments here. Oh, yeah, I love what you're saying. Councilmember Franklin about fur babies, right? And, and doing what we can to retain that veterinary space, right? I know that there's a lot of things about our community that we want to retain. So I appreciate that the property owner is doing everything that they can to do their due diligence and also, you know, maintain what they can of the community's essence while also, you know, the purpose is to change the space, right? And so I'm very open to changing the space with the priority of making it appropriate for the community that it's in and making it in some capacity affordable for people of a certain income level or a certain demographic. So that would be my comments, and I just appreciate everyone's hard work and due diligence, and thank you.
With that, I turn it back to Director Conley. You okay with enough information?
Thank you, Mayor. We have great feedback tonight. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, we will move on to our next discussion item, which is the fiscal years 21, 22, and 22, 23 operating budget overview. Senior management analyst Sarah Taylor is going to provide the staff report. If I have any members of the public that are going to speak on this item, they can indicate so by using the raise hand feature or by pressing star nine now, and then you'll be called upon after the presentation. I'll turn it over to Sarah.
Sarah, you're muted.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor and Council. The purpose of this budget overview is to review the larger components of the general fund budget at a more macro level and to receive direct preparation for the draft budget, which is expected to come before council on May 25th. Preparation of the operating budget is a team effort with city staff from all departments scrutinizing each budget unit on a line item basis. The city moved from a single-year budget process to a two-year budget process with the adoption of the fiscal years 2019, 20, and 2020, 21 operating budget. And the city continues to operate on a July 1st to June 30th fiscal year, retaining the fiscal controls provided by annual budgets. Council received a mid-cycle update for year two of the budget prior to the beginning of the 2022, 23 fiscal year. The order of the presentation tonight will be an overview of the major revenue sources, expenditures by category and type, propel briefly, review the general fund subsidies, review the city council goals, and then a discussion to receive any direction that council may have on the next slide. At this point in time in the budget process, total general fund revenues and other sources are estimated to be 92.3 million for fiscal year 21, 22, and 95.1 million for 22, 23. The majority of revenues come from property tax, sales tax, and charges for services, as shown on the slide. Some of the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic on revenues were milder than earlier predicted. Property tax was largely isolated, and we also saw some increases in sales tax. Other revenue sources are anticipated to continue to be impacted. These include transient occupancy tax, charges for services in the Recreation and Community Services Department, as well as investment revenue. Property tax is our largest general fund revenue source at 26.1 million for fiscal year 21, 22, and 26.9 million for 22, 23. Sales tax revenue is estimated at 20.7 million for fiscal year 21, 22. This is an 8.9% increase over the original fiscal year 2021 estimate. This increase largely reflects sales tax collection from out-of-state online retailers due to the Wayfair decision and implementation of AB 147 that mandated all online retailers collect and remit sales tax. And then an additional 3% increase is estimated for fiscal year 22, 23. And the medical cannabis tax is estimated to increase $2.7 million over the original 2021 budget estimate. This increase can be attributed to opening of all 11 storefronts during the fiscal year 2021 and also revenues coming in higher than initially anticipated. Conservative estimates have been included in the proposed budget for both fiscal years due to the potential approval of medical and adult-use cannabis businesses in other jurisdictions. This conservative estimate is suggested to be capped at $4 million in each fiscal year. However, the amount, total amount to be collected is estimated to exceed $5 million. Individual city council members have expressed interest in utilizing the excess revenue for a variety of opportunities. And if the council agrees with capping the revenue for budgeting purposes, then staff can come back with suggested uses for the excess revenue at a future meeting. Moving on to the transient occupancy tax, also known as hotel tax. This revenue is estimated to decrease by about $400,000 from the original fiscal year 2021 budget estimate. The travel sector has been heavily impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. And at this time, there is still a high level of uncertainty around the extent and duration of suppression measures. The charges for services category includes development permits, ambulance billing, park and recreation program charges, rentals of facilities, and reimbursements related to public safety services. Fiscal year 21, 22 charges for services are estimated to decrease by about $546,000 from the original fiscal year 2021 budget estimate. The decrease in fiscal year, in this fiscal year is related to programming provided by the Recreation and Community Services Department as there is still a high level of uncertainty of what capacity the programs can operate during fiscal year 21, 22. In fiscal year 22, 23, charges for services are expected to recover as programs are offered at the pre-COVID levels. Licenses and permits is largely inclusive of business license fee collection. While the city has not seen a massive exodus of businesses, conservative estimates have been included due to economic uncertainty. Fiscal year 21, 22 license and permits are estimated to decrease by about $260,000 from the original 2021 budget estimate and return to almost pre-pandemic levels for fiscal year 22, 23. The use of money category includes lease income, legal recoveries, contributions, donations, as well as interest income. Interest rates are historically low as a result of the action of the Federal Reserve Board and as they have pledged to keep short-term interest rates low through the foreseeable future. And maturing investments are anticipated to be reinvested at a lower rate. Other sources of revenue in fiscal year 21, 22 include $4.2 million in interdepartmental service charges, about $500,000 for transfers in, and about $1.9 million in planned use of reserves, mostly for capital asset replacement. Staff continues to evaluate revenue estimates to identify any changes that may need to be incorporated into the budget document prior to presentation of the draft budget in May. On slide, down the next slide. This shows the propel projection through the end of the bonds in 2037 using a 2% growth estimate. Revenue in fiscal year 21, 22 is projected to be about $9.6 million, which is more than sufficient to fund the debt service of $7.9 million, as well as $1.2 million in fire personnel. The excess of $1.7 million will be transferred to the propel reserve in fiscal year 21, 22, and about $1.8 million will be transferred to the reserve in fiscal year 22, 23. The next slide shows the total expenses by category. The total general fund expenditures by category, total $82.1 million for fiscal year 21, 22. Additionally, transfers out include $1.2 million to non-general fund budget units and $8.4 million for propel debt service and transfers to the propel reserve. The largest general fund category is public safety, which includes the contract with the San Diego County Sheriff's Department as well as our Vista Fire Department. The budget of $55.5 million in fiscal year 21, 22 includes $1.8 million for replacement of two Type 1 fire engines. And in fiscal year 22, 23, the budget of $57.2 million includes $1.1 million for the replacement of two Type 3 brush engines. These vehicles are all on a replacement schedule and are funded with money set aside in previous fiscal years. On the next slide, this shows the total general fund expenses by expense type. So staffing is the largest expenditure type in the general fund at approximately 45% of the annual general fund expenditures. Increases in this category are largely due to increased pension costs related to CalPERS unfunded liability increases, as well as estimated healthcare rate increases and temporary seasonal minimum wage increases. The professional services budget includes the contract with the Sheriff's Department. It's estimated at $26.6 million. It's estimated at $26.8 million for fiscal year 21, 22, approximately a $1.2 million increase from this current fiscal year. While this is a very large cost, contracting with the Sheriff's Department is a very effective way to provide police protection due to the sheriff's robust capabilities and services. As shown on the bottom of this slide, at this point in time in the budget process, revenues do not meet planned expenditures for the second year fiscal year 22, 23. This is common at the budget overview as staff continues to refine the budget and incorporate any additional direction from the city council prior to presenting a full draft budget in May. Both expenses and revenue estimates will be reviewed for need and accuracy and updated prior to presenting a balanced budget later in May. Slide five, or the next slide. It shows the general fund subsidies. These are programs that have dedicated funding sources but whose revenues do not meet the total expenses necessary to provide the programs. Three of the four subsidized programs are currently above the city council-approved subsidies. These same three programs have all been impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic, and staff continues to adjust as new information becomes available. But at this point in time, it does not appear that the Wave Water Park can open fully for the summer 2021 season and at the current capacity restrictions. And the Moonlight is anticipated a modified summer season with reduced shows and capacity limits. Staff continues to evaluate additional funding sources, including how these programs may be eligible for funding from the city's anticipated allocation from the American Rescue Plan Act passed last March. The Moonlight also plans to apply for the shuttered venue operators grant. And will continue to review the revenues and expenses for the subsidized units as well before bringing the draft budget in May. The next slide, just a reminder of the citywide goals that were established at the goal-setting session in March of 2020. The budget process begins with management reviewing city council goals and priorities for implementation. The next slide highlights just a few of the accomplishments for calendar year 2020 related to the citywide goals. Highlighting just a few, the emergency reserve has increased to 32% with the goal to continue to reach 35%. The city adopted a strategic plan to address homelessness. We also created the COVID-19 Business Response Plan, including a shop local campaign, Vista's open website, and other business support. And the community services program shifted to continue to serve seniors through meal delivery and continue to provide programs that it was allowed to as the Independence Day celebration and our first annual Jingle Terrace Park Drive-Thru Holiday Lights event. This concludes my presentation. And at this point, I am available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Sarah. So do you want to have questions? Or do you want to hear public comments first? Comments first?
Public comments.
Okay, so then I will go to city clerk and see, do we have any public comments?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have two people who'd like to speak. The first is Charis Crop. Go ahead. Do you have three minutes?
Awesome. Thank you, Kathy. I appreciate it. Hello, everyone. My name is Charis, and I live in District 2. While I do not think we should reduce the public safety budget as a whole, I am asking all city council members to reallocate the portion of funds currently slated for law enforcement. People with mental illness and disabilities, the unhoused, as well as sexual assault victims are increasingly at risk of police violence. And I don't think this should be rewarded with the $25 million budget. Instead of continuing to give money to the Sheriff's Department and police programs, please invest in community organizations and create better solutions. Responding to people in crises without police can save lives, de-escalate situations, and properly care for those in need of safety. I know that Councilmember Franklin earlier shared that you guys do have $3.5 million set aside for the unhoused, which I love to hear that. I'm so happy. But that's still less than 15% of the budget that's set aside specifically for law enforcement. And I think, you know, listening to you guys as a council talking about reimagining these spaces and creating a better Vista, I would ask that we also imagine freedom. You know, when I think about freedom, I don't think that throwing people in prisons and jails is freedom. It eliminates them maybe from our conscience, but I don't think that's the right approach. And Deputy Mayor Green, I know that you are a patient man. You've talked to me in the past, and I'm so thankful for that. And I love hearing you talk about Vista being a beacon of light and of hope and of joy. I also want that for Vista, and I just don't think that continuing to give an exorbitant amount of money to police is the way to achieve that. You know, I am concerned when I hear about part of the money going to the Sheriff's Department, talking about the police needing protection. The police are supposed to be protecting the community, but all too often, that results in violence. And, you know, I think even when we hear language about negative activity and problem properties, it robs those people of their humanity and the circumstances that contributed to existing realities. And I think that instead of turning a blind eye there, let's invest in the people and give the community resources that they need. You know, the options are endless. You know, San Diego is full of advocates that actually have pilot programs at the ready. You know, so I'd be more than happy to share resources if anyone is interested. But I do just want to make sure that that is mentioned. I know that I speak on behalf of our household. I think about like my future nieces and nephews. I don't want to have to have them raised in a world where there's ongoing police violence. We know the trial right now of Derek Chauvin is still going on, yet another murder at the hands of police. So I do think now is the time for us to imagine freedom and imagine better alternatives than continuing to funnel so much of this money to those departments. You know, and even if you guys don't want to completely defund the police, which I really...
Your time is up.
Okay. Thank you.
Next speaker is B.C. Garcia. Go ahead.
Can you, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, I'm part of District 2 as well. And I would actually like to echo what the previous person just said. I saw that there was a decrease in crimes within our city. And also, the budget for police is very extensive when in return, we could actually allocate those funds in more efficient and effective resources for our houseless residents, for people that are in need. And we could actually create that beacon like that that person just said, that Joe Green said prior. And actually, I had an incident a couple of weekends ago, and I was at the Veltarist location, and there was a city worker talking to a houseless resident very negatively, inhumane. And I was disturbed by it, so I interjected to try to de-escalate the situation. And I was looking for a resource number to call, and there was none. There was nowhere to call. There was nowhere to seek out for help. So I would suggest in that timeframe, I mean, moving forward, that there could be more resources for when there are circumstances that instead of calling the police, because it was not a police matter, it wasn't a life-threatening situation. It was more so I needed help and not a handcuff, not to be incarcerated, not to be criminalized, that we have to look at people when they're dealing with mental health situations, episodes, or whatever you guys want to call it, that we deal it humanely and effectively. We're actually, we could actually be effective when it comes to being a frontrunner for mental health awareness in Vista. And I also believe that instead of giving that much funding, we could create more programs for the youth, you know, to bring more attention to that. And even having public transportation to be more effective. Buses take forever in this district. It's ridiculous. The distance from each stop is super long. And I see people walking, and I can just only imagine at nighttime the situations that could arise. But I just want to see more effective and more collective council members to speak more humane towards our houseless resident and people in needs because the past previous town halls have been ridiculous. And I just hope that this budget can reflect on a better society for Vista, for all of us, not just the ones that it's conveniently for. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, that is it. Chris, you can only speak once on an item. If you'd like to speak on a different item that's not on the agenda, you may do so under oral communication. So I can go ahead and lower your hand at this time. All right, so we do not have any other speakers. We'll go ahead and close opportunity to provide public comment at this time.
Okay, so I'll throw it out to the council and see. Speak on the, I guess. And I don't see anybody. We need, nobody has big questions or anything?
Mayor, I might add, we're certainly, Ms. Taylor and I are certainly happy to hear any questions that the council has. But we would also like your opinion on the capping of the cannabis revenue and if you have ideas for us to research and explore and come back with for the uses of those additional funds.
I think I saw Councilwoman Contreras first, and then, and then Councilwoman Deputy Mayor, and then Councilwoman Franklin.
Yes, thank you to my coworkers on staff for putting together this presentation and working so diligently to ensure that we have a balanced budget. I want to speak first to the capping of the cannabis sales tax revenue. I am all in favor of that. As far as what I personally, I mean, there's so many things that we could talk about using that money, right, to fund. But I want to go back to some commentary that we had in a public meeting when the council was looking at the economic development strategy. And Deputy Mayor Green brought up a really good point about our workforce development for our youth and utilizing possibly, you know, our local Chamber of Commerce to be a hub for connecting our youth to imagining what different job opportunities there are, career opportunities there are out there. I know personally, you know, I talk to a lot of residents here in Vista, and we talk about their kids, right? I don't have any children, but I feel like I have a parent to all the children here in Vista, and I want to see the best for them. And a lot of times, you know, you're just not born into a situation where, as a kid, you know different career paths. And wouldn't it be awesome if we utilized some of our cannabis sales tax revenue and reinvested it in our youth and helped them build a future self that's going to, in the end, help us as a city have wonderful contributing residents? So I would personally like to see our excess funds in cannabis sales tax to go directly to our youth and in particular, to developing this type of pilot program between Vista Unified School District, the city, and the Chamber of Commerce. So that's, you know, my number one thing for that excess revenue. And I do want to address some of the comments that were made by the public. You know, our public safety is number one, and it comes in many different forms. Public safety doesn't always mean that, you know, a sheriff deputy that costs on average $277,000 annually is the best way to address some of the public safety concerns. So, you know, at some point, the growth in our public safety, the amount of money that it costs us is not going to be feasible. So we have to be really mindful about what public safety is and what it's not. And also, you know, there's a lot of conversation happening at the San Diego County level with the Board of Supervisors that, you know, hopefully, in the direction that these discussions are going, it's very expensive for us as a city to address so many issues at once. So being able to have the county's support when we're looking at behavioral health crisis in our houseless residents is going to be paramount in our ability to manage our budget in an way where we're not just trying to do bare minimum, but we are trying to foster a community where, you know, people are treated in a decent and humane way. And, you know, we focus on outcomes for all our residents, whether they are children, whether they are houseless, or whether they are doing just fine and have big bank accounts, right? We want to make sure that everybody has the opportunities to succeed here in the city of Vista. So those are, those are my comments. And I appreciate all the hard work that goes into putting this presentation and this budget together. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just address the workforce development piece. This is a crowded space with workforce partnership, with community colleges, universities, and nonprofits. But we are working with USD in addition to the chamber and are working with the chamber to get a proposal on how they could interact to provide training and awareness for Vista youth. So that is something that is currently going on. There is a possibility as well that the ARPA funds or additional funds that came out of the American Rescue Plan Act could be used for workforce partnership and workforce training. So we will evaluate those and come back to you with some suggestions. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Appreciate it. And thank you, Councilwoman Contreras. Councilwoman Contreras and I actually spoke about the workforce partnership. We're both Vista kids and kind of made our own way and didn't have a whole lot of support from the business industry in the city of Vista. And I think that partnership between the city and the chamber and the school district is great. So thank you, City Manager Johnson, for making sure that that happens for us because it's going to help a lot of kids out. I was also told to look over the budget. Tell me what you like, what you don't like, and give me your wish list. I can't believe yours is so small, Karina. I feel so bad because you're going to not like me. I got lots of wishes, my friend, but I'll try to tailor it down a little bit. First of all, having a balanced budget is fantastic. Not working out of a structural deficit is amazing. Councilwoman Franklin, when I came onto the council, that was one of your goals, is to work and get a balanced budget so we know exactly what we're spending, and I'm super excited about that. The $300,000 deficit in year three doesn't bother me because I know that the cannabis revenues are extremely conservative. In the staff presentation, it actually says that we're estimated to exceed $5 million, yet our estimate is capped at $4 million. And that's because of uncertainty, but I expect a good amount of extra money will come in. So with that, my wish list, and also the ARPA funds coming in. It's a lot of money, and we got to figure out what strings are attached to those and how those funds are going to be allocated. But those funds can be used for fantastic things for our city. So just me, my Joe Green wish list, in no particular order, with this extra money is something I've been speaking to my city manager about and my city for a while, is solar. We don't have any real solar, you know, facilities throughout our community here or as far as the city buildings go. The school district has really been innovative in getting, you know, solar, you know, parking structures and all that good stuff. And with the amount of money we spend on that electric bill, which I know Councilwoman Contreras probably checked her check register this month, and it was a big fat five-digit-plus check, I guarantee. It's something that I want to look into much, much further and much sooner. So if any of these extra funds can be used to cut down our footprint and stop using, you know, SDGNE and start using the sun to fund the city, that would be awesome. So that's on my list of wishes. The second thing has to do with giving back to the youth as well. I'd like to provide some type of either a COVID relief grant program or maybe a Vista Cares grant program for our nonprofits here locally. A lot of them are struggling because you don't have people who have the money who are being as philanthropic as they used to be, philanthropic, I guess is the word. But, you know, I think if there's any way for us to help out our local nonprofits with some type of grant program funding in addition to what we already do, you know, this cannabis revenue can be used to do big things. And I think, you know, it doesn't have to be a negative for the community. It could definitely be a positive. Another thing, which is actually a line item that I think would be great, is hire another social worker. We have one social worker right now. Her name is Emily, and she is amazing. I've had nothing but great experiences with her. Every resident has reached out to me. She has contacted, she's helped get in housing, she's helped get hotel vouchers. I mean, she has helped these people with so much stuff tremendously, but her workload is overwhelming. So if we're going to have an extra million bucks, let's get another social worker, full-time social worker that can kind of help Emily with her workload and help us, you know, implement all of the items on our strategic master plan. If we have extra money laying around, there's no reason. I feel like that's one of the most important... I feel like that's one of the most important positions in our city. And it's one of the best hires that we have made and focused on as a council. So that's a big one for me. And then the last thing is subsidies. I know you said we might have to subsidize the wave, we might have to subsidize the moonlight. It's a bummer that those places were closed and it might be a little while before they come back. The marijuana industry is doing great. So with that extra money, instead of taking that money out of general fund money for subsidies, maybe the cannabis tax could help with subsidies. And we could reposition the general fund money for, you know, capital improvement projects or park funds or something like that. And my last thing is dog park on the north side of town. What's up? There's no dog park over here. Pancake, Winston and Rosemary. I know Katie's got a little fur baby. And a lot of people in my neighborhood are out walking puppies every single morning. There's no place for us in North Vista to bring our fur babies. So staff, listen, love our fur babies. We need a dog park in North Vista. So I'm gonna leave. Those are my five top picks. I cut it down to five. Those are my five. I saw you writing Profusely, Patrick, so I'm sure you'll never forget. Thank you so much again for a balanced budget. I'd like to thank the councils in the past for putting us in this big financial position. We're gonna hit 35% in our reserves right away. And we don't have to keep putting money in for reserves. We can do big things for our town. And I want to spend the money. It's not our job to be a fantastic Fortune 500 company. It's our job to do the best work for our community while being fiscally responsible. And we've done that. So let's get back to Vista. Patrick's off of mute. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilwoman Franklin, followed by Councilwoman Melendez, followed by Councilwoman Contreras.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. You know, one of the priorities that I've had for all six years I've served on the council is to highlight the fact that through a campaign of silence, we have been supporting a policy of de-policing in Vista. We've had 86 sworn deputies for many years. I think it was 15 years since we'd hired a deputy. We recently added one. It was the initiative of the council. But the ratio, you know, our population has grown in the last decade by over 10,000 residents. So as our population grows, and the state of California has grown by about 1% every year for the last 40 years. So has the city of Vista, grown by about 1% every year for the last 40 years. So as, just as we need to add more teachers to serve our population, just as we need more water resources, more traffic resources, we do need more public safety resources. And it is a problem that our number of sworn deputies as a ratio per thousand citizens has gone from almost one per thousand citizens to less than 0.8 now. That is a problem, and we need to address it. And being silent about it means that we embrace a policy of de-policing. You know, there is, we would have to hire a large number of deputies at this point, more than we could afford to do, to get back to even. But I think it's important, if we have funds, that we continue to prioritize maintaining that ratio. And yes, reports of crime are down largely because the state and Prop 47 and 57 have decriminalized many, what we are hearing called minor crimes, although they're not minor to the victims of those crimes. And so there are many fewer crimes being reported because many things that were once criminal acts are now decriminalized. So I think we need to look at the real driver of the crime report numbers and be cognizant and fair-minded about the fact that it doesn't mean that people are not being victimized by crime in our community. They are. And, you know, the reason that we spend the more of our budget on public safety than on any other priority is because public safety is the number one priority for the city, for this city and any city. It is our number one core mission is to keep the residents of our city safe. For that reason, I'd like to see us focus, if we have a million dollars, on hiring as many as two, but I would ask that we consider at least one. And I would like for that one to be a member of our PERT team, our psychological emergency response team. These deputies are especially trained to work with those who may be suffering from mental illness. I agree, we can do a better job, and we must do a better job, working with the mentally ill. We have an increasingly, a large number and growing number of mentally ill that are untreated and that they have encounters with police that can turn violent if our deputies aren't trained. So we need to add deputies that are trained and that have the specific tools to work with those who are suffering from severe mental illness. So I would ask that we make that a priority, to add at least one PERT deputy, if not add one PERT deputy and one regular deputy. We would, at this point, need to add at least 13 more deputies just to get back to the ratio that we were at 10 years ago. So if we're silent about this subject, it means that we support reducing the amount of policing in our community by 1% every year. And though we have problems that need to be addressed in policing, we know that policing is a valuable tool. We know it's the core mission of the city. And we know that our residents want to feel safe in their community, in their homes. And we know that policing is the number one way that we provide for the public safety. So I would ask the council to strongly consider a proposal to add more deputies. Thank you.
Councilwoman Melendez, sorry, I was mute.
Thank you. Great discussion, everyone. And thank you to city staff for working so diligently here and providing us with such great information. I am a social worker. And as many of you know, I used to work in drug and alcohol treatment, specifically with folks who were impacted by Prop 47, people who are justice involved. So, you know, I know that it is, right, these changes in laws can have an impact on how crime is viewed, but ultimately it has an impact on how we view recovery, right? And how we view treatment for people who are experiencing substance use disorders. So for me, when I think about these cannabis dollars, you know, excess, you know, any excess funds from cannabis tax revenue, my first thing that is coming to mind is equity. So especially when we consider how many individuals in our community have been criminalized by anti-cannabis laws in the past. We can't really ignore that history. And so I'm thinking towards how to consider using excess cannabis tax dollars to be funded towards alternatives. And continue, right, this move towards viewing certain human behaviors, not as criminal behaviors, but as, you know, behaviors of illness that it needs to be addressed by other kinds of professionals. So I really appreciate what Deputy Mayor Green was sharing about hiring another social worker. I think it is one of the challenging roles that our city could definitely use more assistance with. That would be, I'll add that to my wish list, too. I didn't kind of think about that right away. But I am looking at these cannabis dollars from an equity standpoint. And when I think about, right, how the community of people who have been impacted by anti-cannabis laws, and now we have, as a city, right? Imagine, Lord's year of 2021. We have, as a city, estimated over, potentially over $4 million, right, of cannabis tax revenue. That, for me, is an incredible asset, right? That is really entrenched in a history of anti-cannabis legislation, right? And criminalizing, you know, human behavior of substance use when I think that now we're moving towards, right, a future that is seeing the substance use as a human behavior that is, you know, at times abuse and needs to be addressed. So that would be one of the things that I would put on my wish list, is that funds for, that are excess cannabis tax revenue could be used towards recovery programming. I know that we like to prioritize recovery services when we discuss homelessness. But, you know, unfortunately, that kind of gets out in the way of the conversation when we're trying to have a conversation about housing and shelters and those kinds of things. So now that we're talking about, right, cannabis and potentially, right, kind of reimagining how we use these funds, I would like to see these funds go towards recovery for the people that do need it. And also agree with Councilwoman Contreras regarding youth programming, right? Our youth have been very impacted, right, in negative ways by cannabis. And that can be, right, counteracted by providing positive, what we call in recovery, recovery circles, pro-social environments. So creating more environments in our community that can counteract negative influences of substances by having alternative, pro-social, positive, future-forward-thinking environments, right? Looking towards workforce development, building people's skills. I think that that is a great idea. And ultimately, things that are tangible and material for our community, right, are ultimately going to be the things that are reducing crime and reducing, you know, public health issues. So any excess cannabis tax revenue dollars that could be used towards assisting our nonprofits, that can be used towards, you know, helping people pay for their basic needs, right? I love the idea of Vista Cares. That's amazing. Deputy Mayor Green, you're full of great ideas today. So I'm really coming from this at a point of equity, right? We have these excess cannabis dollars that never before, right, we would have had. But with these amazing changes, with the amazing advocacy that has happened in our community, we now have the option to use them, right, towards these alternatives. We can be creative, we can try something different. And we have seen, especially in the work that I was doing, I saw an incredible impact from being able to work with people who are impacted by Prop 47, people who struggle with substance use disorders, people who are sleeping outside, experiencing homelessness. And, you know, being criminalized for that behavior didn't help them, right? It just ended this vicious, it created this vicious cycle. But as they were integrated into a program, they were able to, right, the problematic behavior was able to be resolved, right, in a really more effective way. So when I think about how to use these dollars, I think what's going to be equitable? What is going to be effective? I think we heard from some callers tonight, you know, referencing that they want to see things that are more effective. That doesn't mean we don't have, there's not a function of sheriff deputies in our community. They definitely serve a function, and that's why we have them on our budget. And that's why they're part of our, right, you know, part of our community, part of our city. You know, however, there's, there's so many different functions of a city. And that includes, right, taking a look at some of the needs and the gaps in the community. I think a lot of residents are expressing that there's some, some basic needs that are being experienced, right? Things like housing stability, things like access to food, mental health services, recovery services. So I just, I think there's never enough resources for them. As, the reason why I ran for city council is because I was serving as a social worker, and I was just like, I can't even do my job. Like, how am I supposed to be a link from, right, for someone who's experiencing homelessness or experiencing these different challenges? How am I supposed to be a link to these resources and services if, boop, they're like, they're not there, right? So that's really why I ran. So when I see this come up on our city council agenda, I'm like, perfect, right? This is gonna help make the job of other social workers, right, who are coming after me much, much easier. So I like the idea of us looking into what it would look like to hire another social worker. Or even Councilmember Franklin, a PERT clinician, right? These are really valuable roles. I know that there's a concern about safety. I used to go out and do outreach with some of the local police departments in North County. And we would go with a PERT clinician and with their PERT team or with other mental health professionals along with law enforcement officers. And, oh my gosh, it's an incredible difference, right, that somebody who is trained in mental health, you know, working alongside law enforcement can make. I think that those services towards mental health, recovery, well-being, quality of life, rather than criminality, those things need to be the focus of these cannabis dollars. Because really, when we look at the history of anti-cannabis laws and how we're even able to have these dollars in the first place, my first thought is, how can we kind of look back and honor the history and see how we can make this more equitable for everyone? So those are my thoughts. I don't know if that's anything real tangible for you to take back, Patrick Johnson, but that's what I had to share with you guys today. I think there's a lot of great conversation here. And hopefully, we can use these dollars and use these funds in a way that honors the community as best as possible. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Contreras.
Well, Deputy Mayor Green, I love your wish list. And yes, our top 20 vendors, we have San Diego Gas and Electric at a whopping $106,510.71. I think, where are the solar panels, right? Exactly, like, we're seeing the school district come to bat, really creating shade and utilizing the sun. I would love to do that at the Civic Center. So I am all on board on exploring that. I also want to offer my support when we're talking about, hey, does it make sense to have another social worker? We definitely should explore that. And one of the other things, too, you know, when we're talking about public safety, we, you know, get our little summary of, you know, where crime is, our monthly report. And you know what? It kind of doesn't move from a certain area. And one of the things that I've heard, not only from our deputies, but a lot from our community is, hey, we want some lighting. So, you know, in an area that has, historically, has high crime and doesn't have sufficient lighting, and we're talking about a very urban area, that is a great investment for our community. What a great innovative way to look at decreasing this crime that just, it doesn't seem to go away. And in particular, you know, I'm talking about in District One, you know, streets that people like to walk from where they live to go get something at, you know, the, the local market. And they don't necessarily feel safe once the sun goes down. So I think we can do a much better job of integrating our residential areas that are right next to commercial corridors and making it safe and a better, more friendly business environment. What a better way to honor a lot of these businesses that have been in our community for decades. You know, I want to offer that as another avenue to explore for increasing our public safety. And, you know, I think it's, we've, we've gotten a lot of comments just even this, the last few months of individuals who express a lot of frustration with the current method that we have here in the city to add lighting. So, you know, let's get some solar panels and let's get some more lights in areas where it makes sense, where people really, really want them, and where we would have a public benefit, not just for our residents in residential areas, but for our business community. I mean, I think, you know, in some areas, it's, it's long overdue. That, I, that's the only thing that I would add at this point because I think we have a really big wish list. But yeah, I really like the discussion that we're having right now. I really, really commend my colleagues on trying to figure out, hey, how can we address some of the gaps in our community and utilize this, these funds to build more well-being?
Okay, so I'm gonna ask our city manager to answer a couple of things. One thing is this, the solar panels for the school district, they got grants, I think, to do those. So they didn't have to put the money out. And I think, and we've checked on that a few times. And I think that Patrick can talk a little bit about it. I think it took like 12 years to recover our cost on it. It was a long time thing. So I think we're checking into it again. And then the other thing is, the county is talking about social workers. They're getting, I think, 10 social workers. And I wasn't, didn't get to go to that meeting that they had. There was a homeless meeting for city managers, and maybe they talked about it there. So maybe our city manager can. And then one other thing is, just everybody, this is, could be one-time money. The county is also gonna put in cannabis stores for recreational. And, and the cities around us are keep checking on it. So be careful with the money. Know that it might be, it is not ongoing every year, more money all the time. You know, it might be a one-time or two-time thing, and we have some extra money to do. So I just want everybody to be careful of that. So then I turn over to our city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And that's exactly why we want to cap that funding. In terms of solar, we've looked at it, I think, probably five times since this, well, four times since this building has been open. And it is close to a 12- to 14-year payback for the investment, which in most cases is a long time. And speaking of the school district, obviously, I'm not an expert in all school district things. But I do know that the state provided money for solar or those type of programs that they could use it for. And then I believe... type of programs that they could use it for. And then I believe that the school district also partnered with a company to put up solar where they use their, the school district's private property, and fix the school district's rates, and the private company generates solar and, and obviously a profit off of that. At this point in time, we haven't chosen to go down that path with our property, but we are definitely looking at solar options. We will again, for this facility, and a couple other facilities where it could be very useful. In terms of the social worker issue, obviously, you're going to have your report from the homeless strategic plan update next council meeting, where we will go into detail about the efforts of the social worker. We can also look at what the funding sources are available for that, in addition to the cannabis funds. But you're correct that the Board of Supervisors, I believe, last week passed a measure to fund ten social workers for North County in particular, from the cities of Del Mar, all the way to Escondido. And so we are currently working with the county on how that's integrated into Vista and the surrounding neighborhoods. I hope that answers your question.
That does answer my question. So are there, are there other questions? I don't see any other hands raised. So if not, then I will go to oral communications, if that's.
Mayor, I was just going to say, before you go on, I think we have plenty of direction for the next seven years worth of cannabis funds. We will come back to you, and we will provide you better information for you to help us prioritize. Thank you very much for tonight.
Okay, thank you. And so this is an opportunity now for the public to comment on agency-related matters that are not on the agenda. If any members of the public wish to address the city council, they can indicate so by using their raise hand feature, or right now, or pressing star nine now. So, City Clerk, is there any oral communications?
Yes, Mayor. The first speaker is Kelly McCormick. Go ahead, Kelly.
Good evening. My name is Tyler McCormick, and I'm currently a sophomore in high school. Over the weekend, I saw an article in The Times of San Diego, written by teens who are distributed about, who are disturbed about the way commercialized marijuana is changing the community. I understand how they feel. Many of us have plans to pursue a career like becoming a doctor, teacher, or engineer, and using marijuana will not bring any of us closer to reaching our goals. In fact, it can cause students to lose interest in school, and their grades will suffer. The marijuana industry tries to convince government leaders that pot shops will benefit the community. But many of us see that recreational marijuana, for what it is, an industry that takes advantage of people and thrives by addicting its customers. We can see how marijuana is changing our neighborhoods. In San Diego, marijuana billboards are everywhere. We see sign spinners, flyers, advertisements, and party buses plastered with logos. I hope the same thing doesn't happen in Vista. The ads scream for attention. They use bright color and show young-looking people who seem to be having a great time. But they are hiding the dark side of addiction and negative effects on physical and mental health. Tobacco companies were finally ordered to include a warning label on cigarette packs. When will marijuana companies be required to do the same? Years on from now, many people will see that commercializing the marijuana industry has been a huge mistake, but it's my generation that will suffer the greatest consequences. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Barbara Gordon. Go ahead, Barbara.
Thank you. Dear City Council, again, my name is Barbara Gordon. I've come here tonight because I wanted to share my concerns regarding the misconception around marijuana businesses, especially with cultivation. Recently, an editorial in the Colorado Spring Gazette by the original author behind Colorado's Prop sixty-four, Robert Corre, wrote that "The current reality I was too naive to anticipate ten years ago is that the commercialized, for-profit, government-protected, privileged industry with its obscene profits would be detrimental to the public good and planet Earth. The misconceptions that marijuana is natural and therefore safe has been no better refuted than in Colorado, where big pot corporations are genetically engineering these plants to increase the THC potency." He goes on to say, "Here is what we've learned from Colorado. These plants must be grown indoors, are weaker than natural plants grown outside, more susceptible to pests such as mildew and mites. In order to kill these pest chemicals, pesticides, herbicides, fertilizers are used that have toxic carcinogens, which ultimately ingested by consumers and run off into water systems. Colorado has shown us the downside: environmental destruction, a public health nuisance, increased burden on medical and treatment communities, increased DUIs, increased psychotic paranoia," to, to name a few. Why are cities over, fawning over an industry that will wreak such havoc on our communities, family, and environment? My hope is the city will not allow marijuana cultivation businesses in the city with its predatory practices. We can all learn from Colorado's mistakes." Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Becky Rapp. Go ahead, Becky, Becky. Becky, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Becky Rapp, and I am a parent and a youth group mentor. I first wanted to thank you for the great discussion tonight regarding land use. It's obviously you guys are taking careful consideration regarding what the city of Vista will look like, look like in the future, and that is only benefiting our children and, and those to come, and I appreciate that. I'd also like to recognize Councilwoman Contreras's comment regarding spending money on educating youth regarding marijuana, and also Melendez's regarding implementing a more robust mental health program. These are great conversations, as it brings me to why I am here tonight. I'm here to raise awareness regarding marijuana use by youth and adults. The link between marijuana use and mental health problems is becoming more prevalent. A couple weeks ago, I learned that a middle school teacher had heavily, had been heavily using marijuana during the closure to combat, combat anxiety and depression. Within a few short months, this beloved and highly respected teacher experienced a psychotic break, including schizophrenic episodes causing a dangerous situation for other staff at the school. He was let go from his teaching position and is now seeking help in a mental health institution. This beloved teacher is suffering, and now all the students are suffering, and the staff at the school is also suffering. As a parent, this is deeply concerning as we continue to read headlines of shootings and murders, only to find out the perpetrator was a heavy marijuana user. I ask Vista to help protect our city from the normalization of marijuana in and around our communities. Help educate children, youth, and adults regarding the negative effects. When a city permits pot shops, they're sending a message to residents, youth, and adults that this is a safe and healthy product. I urge you to take a closer look at the research regarding mental health issues and how they are on the rise. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Daniel O'Donnell. Go ahead, Daniel.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I didn't get a chance to speak at the last meeting, and as Kathy had just mentioned, my name is Daniel O'Donnell. But I just want to commend you all on your unanimous vote for the proclamation of the Vietnam War Veterans Act. My, my father is a proud veteran of the Vietnam War. He served as a member of Mike Company Thirty-three, and he will let you know every chance he gets. He nearly lost his life there, serving. He took a shot in his shoulder while serving, doing a routine platoon mission while he was there. But I just want to say thank you. A lot of these men and women, as you had alluded to during that meeting, came back to jeers instead of cheers. And despite serving this country honorably, they were treated with a great deal of disrespect. So I just wanted to commend you all on passing that, and just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. All right, we did not have any other speakers, so we'll close oral communications at this time.
Okay, with that, that would take us to our remarks. I'll do a couple of things here. I have summer day camp registration open today for children three years old to eighth grade. Camp information is available online at vista recreation dot com. And also, Sandag is asking residents to share their transportation priorities in the North County region by taking an online survey. We've placed a link on our website to the survey at cityofvista.com, or you can go to sandag.org. I would ask everyone to please use it, because usually the people that are heavily transit, you know, do this, but, you know, there are a lot of people that drive cars, too, that, you know, that, and would like to see some money put into freeways. And so it'd be nice to have other, you know, other people, what their choices are. And scooters, if Joe wants to go on there, right, his little scooter on there, you could do that, too. But there are lots of transportation choices, but I, I just like everybody to put more transportation choices, because whatever is put on there is what they're going to focus on, and that's where the money will go. And so I just, a reminder of that. And then one thing, I went to, attended, the veterans did a fifty-year anniversary for the Vietnam War on Saturday, which I attended. It was well, it was very well-attended there, and Jay Striker Meyer was there as a speaker, and he's a veteran of Vietnam. There are a lot of the Vietnam vets there. So it was, and I was the only elected official that attended that, which was kind of interesting. So anyway, that's, that's my announcements for today. So I will move on. Let's see, I'll start with the order I see you on the screen. So I'll start with Deputy Mayor Green.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, and thank you for attending the veterans event on behalf of the city. I love that you always get out there and represent Vista, and show that smile off to everybody, and let them know we care about them. So thank you for that. I want to thank my colleagues for a great discussion tonight. I mean, having different personalities, different lines of work that we come from, and just different opinions is what makes the city great. And it's what's going to make us move into the future with all of our different prerogatives and perspectives, and grow the city to what it's eventually going to be. So thank you guys all for that. One of the purposes of these oral communications is to report back for boards we're on. And one of the boards that I attended was my RISWA board, and I am the trash man. So I'm the vice chair of the Regional Solid Waste Association. And the big thing coming down in trash is SB thirteen eighty-three, which is reducing short-lived climate pollutants in California, or organic waste diversion. You've all seen increases on your trash bill as far as a cost goes. This is the year where we have to start actually diverting organic waste. EDCO has built what's called an anaerobic digester, and they're asking every resident to divert your organic waste in what's called a kitchen caddy, which can be provided to you through EDCO. And this is something, you're supposed to put all your orange peels and banana peels and leftover food in, and you actually dump it directly in your green waste container. There is no additional container for this organic waste. It all goes in the green waste container, and they're actually recycling it and turning it into renewable natural gas. So we're working on our, our zero emission footprint, our net zero footprint here in the city of Vista, and EDCO is helping us out tremendously. So I do want to make sure, you know, the purpose of this isn't just to put undue restrictions on cities. And some of the stuff coming down from Sacramento, we know, does put undue restrictions. However, one in eight Californians and one in five children are food insecure in the state of California. In 2017, the state of California disposed of twenty-seven million tons of organic waste, and, which is a lot of leftover food. Some of the biggest producers are restaurants. So the state of California has made a lot of different guidelines and things that we have to implement, and actual programs we have to come up with as a city in order to meet these guidelines. So the six big things that they're going to be focusing on, I'm just going to tell you these six things real quick. I'll be asking EDCO and their SB thirty thirteen eighty-three specialists to come give us a presentation, so you guys can let all your districts know why we're doing what we're doing and how we're going to do it. But we have to provide organic collection services to all residents and businesses. That's phase one. We've already done that. We have to establish an edible food recovery program. So we're working with our local restaurants and businesses to provide edible food recovery for food insecure residents. We have to conduct education outreach to the community. What is organic waste? Why are we diverting it? We have to procure recyclable and recovered organic products. So we're moving away from plastic and star foam and all that stuff. We have to secure access to recycling and edible food recovery capacity. So we have to find out where's this all coming from, how much capacity do we have, and how can we get it back to our residents? And lastly, we need to monitor compliance and conduct enforcement. So there's different timeframes and guidelines that we need to implement these six different strategies for, but these strategies are going to help our, our community tremendously, and also help us beat the SB thirteen eighty-three goals, so they don't fine our city for not complying. So that is my report back from RISWA. We're going to be working on a lot of stuff. We are giving money directly to the seven member cities to comply with SB thirteen eighty-three from our organization, and I'll continue to keep the council and the city updated as we come into compliance. Thank you so much. Sorry for the long report. That's my job. Have a great night. Vista, eat some tacos.
Councilmember Franklin.
Well, thank you very much. I, Councilman Green, I like to use my coffee grinds and orange peels to fertilize my roses and orange trees. So don't be digging through my trash for my leftovers. No, I wanted a report that, and I really appreciate our city staff arranging. I toured the last three weeks, I toured Haven House at Interfaith, which is one of the two shelters that the city of Vista provides finances for. Also, last week, I visited La Posada in Carlsbad. That was a strikingly beautiful facility. A lot of people, very happy to have the opportunity to be there. Really, first-class facilities. You would never know that they're just down the street. If you get on Faraday, they're just down the street from Shatter Ridge. So we do have resources right here in our community that we're making available. These are low-barrier shelters. We have beds tonight for those who are desirous of being sheltered. Emily, our social worker, is out offering those shelter beds to individuals every day on the streets of our city. So we are out there, we are extending the hand of help. We wish that more people would take advantage of it. We wish all ten of those beds that we're paying for, five in Escondido at Interfaith, and, and five right here outside of our neighborhood, just on the southern end of Vista, at La Posada. We wish those were all full, and we wish that the folks would take advantage of them more. But we're working to spread the word and, and earn the trust of the individuals who are homeless on our streets. And so again, just thank you to the staff, and I know that some of my colleagues are working to get out to those facilities as well. But I hope you do all get out and see the facilities firsthand, and that way you can let other members of the community know what we're doing to help serve the needs of the homeless in our, in our city. Thank you very much.
Member Melendez.
I don't have too much more to add. I just want to say I love you, Vista, and everyone be safe, and have a really great night.
Thank you. Councilmember Contreras.
Well, I do want to say that our trash pickup crew has finally started picking up trash again. So if you would like to participate in a trash pickup, just bring your mask. If not, we have some extras. And we have everything else that you need. We have our buckets, our pickers, our trash bags. We meet every Wednesday, so tomorrow, at nine AM at Luzduran Park. And before we break to pick up trash, we actually have a little discussion to figure out what our route for the day is going to be. So it's a great time to interact with the community in a safe way, and, you know, figure out where in, near, not too far, because we walk, where near Luzduran Park, we could, you know, offer a hand. So if you can, come join us, nine AM at the parking lot at Luzduran Park. You'll see me there. I'll probably have my, my straw hat on or something like that. And I do just want to say, you know, thank you to all my colleagues. We all have, you know, different perspectives, and that doesn't, it's, it's not a bad thing, right? If anything, we see that it is a benefit to the public to come from different perspectives when we have these discussions. And we had a really good, robust discussion today on several items. So I appreciate my colleagues, and I very much appreciate all my coworkers on staff that are working so hard to make sure that the city keeps going. And outside of that, I hope you all have a wonderful night and a good rest of the week.
Thank you. City Manager Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have some good news tonight. Our Paseo Santa Fe Streetscape project, phases two and three, that were recently completed. that were recently completed, were awarded the American Public Works Association 2021 Project of the Year. So that is great news. I think we're all very proud of it. And do want to congratulate our engineering and our community development departments for the great work that they did on that project. Other, other good news is, a week ago, we moved into the orange tier, as all of you know. So allowed to, businesses to reopen at different levels, different occupancy levels, and increase their business. And in addition, last week, the governor announced that on June 15th, California will fully open its economy. And there's a couple of caveats to that. One is the vaccination supply, if it's sufficient. The other is hospitalization rates. But as a result of that, that has allowed us to change the way we're viewing our recreational programming for the summer season. So our plan is to open up the Moonlight and have a four-show season, which will be announced hopefully within the next week. And then we're also going to open the moon, the Wave Water Park and have day camps, swim lessons, private rentals. And we will open it to the public on weekends for the summer. We have kind of a shortened summer as a result of the schools getting out later and then starting rather early in August. So we will open the Wave on the weekends. And then we'll also bring some of our recreational programming back, including day camps. So we're excited to see recreation starting to get back to normal. And another item is, as I've reported, Councilman Franklin brought it up about the available beds at our shelters. And today, La Posada does not have any shelter beds available, but, but there are three beds at Haven House. So we currently have three beds available for those who want it or would like to have that shelter. And last, I just wanted to say happy birthday to Councilmember Contreras, who celebrated her birthday last Friday night. So happy belated birthday.
How about our city attorney, Darryl Piper?
Well, I have nothing, but now happy birthday, Councilmember Contreras.
I second that. Okay, and last but not least is our city clerk. Where is she? Kathy Valdez.
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Okay. So with no other further remarks, then I will, we'll call it a day and adjourn our meeting. So see you all soon.
Happy birthday, Karina. See you later.